You want me to read the notice?
Yeah.
I can do that if you want me to.
We'll start up.
I don't care.
Public hearing notice, the town of Abington's zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 14, 2019 at 7:05 PM at the Abington Town offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on a petition of W. Lee Mann, Jr. and Maria Mann, 82 Jennings Drive, Abington. Frontage with lot with variances under 175-21 for lot 2A, 2.30 acres in lot 2B, 6.31 acres. Variance to allow sharing of existing driveway in the water, wetlands and ledges on lot 2A under 175-14, see plan, special permit to build a single family house on lot 2A in FW overlay district under 175-85, and waiver of environmental impact statement at 140 Rockland Street. The property is located on assessors map 22, lot 14A, in the R40 zone, Rich Nagrelli, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a continued hearing from December 12 to December 12th. This was actually held on November 14th and continued to tonight.
Well, I do have a memo from the Abington planning office in regards to the petition of Lee and Maria Mann, 140 Rockland Street. Board members are concerned that perhaps this driveway, in quotes, may instead fall under the town's subdivision rules and regulations, which then drainage and stormwater management could be reviewed. So, putting that out there on the public. Mr. Reilly.
Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street. With me tonight, once again, is Mr. Lee Mann and Maria Mann, his wife, the owners of the property at 140 Rockland Street. As Mr. Burbin mentioned, this is a continuation of our previous hearing, so we won't rehash everything all over again. You do have the plan in front of you, a great, which shows the proposed two lots, taking the eight-plus acres into the two lots. Just for the record and just to submit, this was the other option for the future. I'll put this in there. They had hired an engineer to do a preliminary subdivision plan, show, you know, what could we do with this land? And it shows a five-lot subdivision lot, which was somewhat what the planning board was just alluding to, that this five-lot plan would require subdivision approval and drainage installations and issues like that. What the Manns are applying to the zoning board is for something much less significant, which is the variances that would allow only two lots to be constructed or built on this eight-and-a-half acres of land. We noted earlier, there are a couple of checks that, you've got to check the box with the variance standards, you know, are there issues relating to soil conditions, topography? And the plan clearly shows that the driveway entrance is abutting a significant wetland area. There are huge ledge outcroppings, mountains really, out there on the property, that essentially would block a second driveway. We're trying to basically maintain the nature of the property. The cost of putting such a roadway in would be about $650 per foot, not including blasting. So, we're estimating a cost, a hardship of the fi- about $500,000 if a driveway was not approved, but a roadway was instead kind of required. And we also noted at the last meeting about the purposes of our zoning bylaw. And I read some of them off to you, but part of the purposes listed in 175-2 are to protect and conserve the value of property, to prevent overcrowding of land, to encourage the most appropriate uses of land, and to conserve natural conditions. And we would submit to you that using the eight-and-a-half acres for two houses would do just that, would conserve natural conditions, prevent overcrowding, much better, in a much better way than a five-lot subdivision. Obviously, if the variances were approved and the special permits were approved, this would remain a private entrance, which would be maintained 100% by the Manns and not the town. There'd be no snow removal by the town. We would preserve the existing forested area on Rockland Street. As you drive by now, what you see is what you get, and there would be privacy for the homeowners and the neighbors because of the limited development. I do know there was a mention made of some case law, and I think it was Andy, Mr. Burbin had mentioned that he thought that the law says that, you know, you can't grant a variance in this town, in this situation with these facts. And I would only offer a different interpretation of that, that I think I agree with you that the law gives you reasons why you don't have to grant the variances with these facts, but it doesn't prevent you from granting the variances. This board, if the majority would agree, the three of you would agree, could determine that based on the topography and based on the issues of this land and based on the goals of our zoning bylaw as are listed in 175-2, that granting variances in this instance would result in a net better development and a less impact of this property and the property around them, that without the variances, then the only other way to develop it is to go with more lots than the two that the Manns are requesting. So, I know that we continue this hearing with the hopes, we invited you all to contact Lee to go out and walk the property, because I think if you saw the property, you would see much more what the plan would show you, but the size of the ledge outcroppings and just the beautiful layout of it, how the two houses would, where they would lie. And I, excuse me, I don't know if any of you got out there? Did anybody see it?
I've driven by it.
Walked the property.
You've been out on the property? Great. So, you're familiar with it.
Good after he left.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. So, again, the Manns are hoping that with this approval, there would be a second house for their daughter to move to. And as we mentioned before, we would agree on a condition as part of this approval, that we would be limited to two lots on the eight-and-a-half acres. We return here to answer any questions. I hope you will look positively on this, because we think it's a better plan for the town and for the immediate neighbors in the area, where zoning relief, I think, can conform to the goals of our zoning bylaw.
Do you have anything, gentlemen?
I don't have any questions.
Bob?
I have no question. The property is gorgeous. I mean, it really is.
Thank you.
But I was going to say, if you're going to put five or six developments out there, someone's going to be blasting for at least six months or longer, just to get the ledge out of the way, to do any, then you're going to have radar issues. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't.
Parts of it would have to be moved, you're right.
I wouldn't want to have to build on all that. And the way you put in your daughter's house, which is very convenient to see a grandchild, was a beautiful little section.
Right.
Your foundation, the way you positioned your foundation, I thought was very smart.
Thank you.
Thinking of how you were doing it, because I.
I appreciate you walked out this, sir.
It took, I took, you just had just left the property when I came down the street from working. So, it was, I did walk the whole property. I said, I'm only seven blocks, eight blocks away from you, so I know people on that street. I both know the Connleys and I know the Greenos and a bunch of other people there. So, it is a beautiful piece of land.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that.
Let's register as a farm, because I wanted to make it a farm. That's why I really wanted, only wanted to put one other house there.
Well, if you do make it a farm, I'll buy your, I'll buy your eggs. Trust me. But it is a beautiful piece of property. I don't doubt that at all.
Thank you.
I think about, the way it's presented, as you presented it, I thought was good. My only, my only concern is, and I understand your presentation, Sean, or Mr. Riley, should be Attorney Riley, is conformity, non-conformity issue, piece of the, taking a conformed piece of land and making two non-conformed pieces of land. As much as I'd like to say, I understand all of that technically, I don't, I just understand the logistics of reading it. I opened the book up and read the piece of conformity, non-conformity. That's the only piece I, I still have a thing in my throat on, is why would we want to, in the town? And I'm just learning, so I didn't come here thinking I'd be a voting member tonight. I thought I'd still be a learning, I'm still trying to learn my process here. But my argument is, is why in the town where we have conforming lots, which is, it's a beautiful big lot, it's a conforming lot, why do we ever want to allow the creation of non-conforming lots? And I listened to your argument, I understand your argument, but it's the base, the base in this town that I've been here, and I've only been here 27 years. I moved in, I forget the year, before my kids were in grammar school. But I've watched this town grow, and I've seen other developments coming, and some of the other developments I've seen happen here, I just wish that had happened. So, my, my, my look at this really is, we have a conforming lot. Why do we, and I understand on the basis of, we have a conforming lot, we're going to find two conforming lots to prevent future development of the property, if it all, that could happen, whether it happens or not, I don't know, but could happen, is that only argument for me. It's the, do I ever want to allow the town to continue on with the process of creating non-conforming lots when we already have a conforming lot in the process? That's my only negative aspect. The rest of it, I understand why you're doing it. I think it's great that you want to have a grandchild next to you and all that stuff like that. Just to me, it's the conformity of the process of the law, which is we have a conforming lot, why do we want to make it that conform? That's my only argument.
And it's, it's a great point, and I would agree with you on the typical, you know, let's say this, I have a lot of clients who come to my office asking me to represent them to come before the board, because they want to do that. I have one right now who wants to take a 30,000-square-foot lot and split it into two in an R40 zone. I said, you can't do it. "Yeah, but I want to try." And I said, "Well, then get another attorney, because you can't do it." That's not the situation we have here. Here we have 8.6 acres, so we're creating a lot, one lot with, you're required of a minimum of 40,000 square feet in this zone. One lot would have 100,557 square feet, which is basically two-and-a-half times the size, and the other lot would have 274,925,000 square feet, which is, I can't do the math there. Six to seven times the size, something like that. I think, yeah, seven times the size. We have 155 feet of frontage out on Rockland Street that won't change in its character. So, I think this is one of those instances where I'm saying that variances might well do good for the town and for the neighborhood, because we're not creating small lots whatsoever. We could create five lots. Yes, it would be very expensive to put that in, and it's not something they're going to do in year one. But this is a very limited development in, development of 8.6 acres of land. And that's where I think in the end run, it's a good thing. It's limited, and you guys can control it by simply putting that condition on there. And the driveway would be exactly where it is, so there's no change to the neighbors.
So, could I ask you one question?
Please.
Mrs. Johnson has the property on the right corner.
That's correct.
I know Mrs. Johnson, she was my children's secretary at St. Bridget's, so I know her. That's why I put my kids in preschool here, so. I haven't, I know, I know the Connleys are here, there are mothers. Have we heard anything from her at all? Have you spoke to her at all? Have either one of you spoke to her? Does she have any?
I have spoke to her, and she's always appreciates what I do for her, because her daughter is about my age, but she's on oxygen. So, anytime I ever have an opportunity and I see them rolling in their rubbish, I'll always go over there and help them, or if they need a hand.
But she has any problem with your?
She has no problem. She said, wish I brought my cot, she just sent us today a Christmas cot, appreciating what we do, but I usually, I usually don't like to talk about stuff like that, because I'm a very private person.
So, she had the right to be so.
We know that via butters within 300 feet were notified, which is standard, you know, for this.
Standing on my procedure when this happens.
So, the people across the street, the Connleys, the Johnsons, and whoever up to a certain, you know, radius were notified as part of the proceedings. Yeah, and I suppose, and behind.
She knew about it. I told her that I'd like to someday put my daughter, yeah?
So, where I sit on this is, I think it's in the board's power to grant a variance on issues like this. I would like less development than more development, but at the same time, in all the years of being on the board, I don't remember us allowing a pork chop lot. And that's in essence what we'd be creating. Back even in the days where you just had to blink twice and you got a variance, I don't remember, you know, maybe once, but I don't remember that. And I know many an instance where small frontage in, in the lot just opening up, and it didn't get passed, it didn't go through. I would much rather, as I said last month, see two houses here, or one house here, than four, five, six, or seven, but I'm not necessarily in love with setting a precedent either. So, I think that's, that's the fence I'm sitting on right now, gentlemen.
I think we asked Rainy, the town council's opinion. She gave us basically what the law says.
I haven't seen it, so.
A variance is not properly granted where the hardship was created by the landlord, which is going to be, I have the case here. A property owner cannot obtain a variance by creating his own hardship, which is what, so, we've got town councils opinion, we've got case law saying, I know you're saying we can, I don't, I don't think we can. I think we're constrained by the statute, we're constrained by case law. We shouldn't be going beyond that. We shouldn't be making up our own law. The law is pretty clear, to me, it's pretty black letter, that you cannot create your own hardship and can benefit from that.
Yeah. And, you know, it's difficult, because I know they're going to say, "We didn't create it because we bought it as it is." I mean, you know, we obviously didn't sell off.
But they bought a one, they bought a single lot.
They bought a lot with, the frontage currently exceeds the minimum, and the lot area exceeds the minimum, okay?
Right. But it's not enough for two.
The frontage is not enough for two.
You had two frontages, or you had whatever it is, the 200 and something feet you'd need.
110.
You need 240, I think?
Right. Exactly. And that's what this board is for.
Right.
Because the law says you don't have to grant a variance.
But I think, just to interrupt, I think the law says we can't grant a variance in this, in this situation.
Like minds disagree, right?
Yeah. I think council said we can't.
If, if that's the board's position, with your agreement then, I would ask that you allow them to withdraw this without prejudice, instead of just denying this.
Done that in the past, I don't.
Right. And if there's something they can do and come back, they'd have to, essentially, you're telling them they need to buy more land to make that work, more frontage. I don't know that that's possible. It probably isn't possible, but.
Personally, I don't have a problem, because we have allowed that.
Yeah.
We want to withdraw without prejudice.
So, how do all the other towns have pork chop lots like that?
I can't speak to that.
It's, I personally think it's a, mostly more, the more affluent town, actually, Whitman has it too. I don't mean to shame Whitman, but, you know, Norwell.
Whitman has it, Norwell has it, Waymouth has it, Hanover has it, Sitewatt has it, Coacit has it.
And typically, what they'll say is, you have a minimum frontage of 40 or 50 feet. And if you, because in situations where you have a lot of backland, the backland has to be double what the normal lot area requirement is, so in an R40 zone.
And we have that.
You're right. We just don't have this bylaw, though. That's why we're here.
You're right.
Because other towns utilize it just for this purpose, where you can develop, what most towns are calling a state lot, instead of building a road to get out there, you build a driveway to get out there.
And our driveway is a lot wider than any other towns that I work in, because I'm trying to get trucks in and out, and I'm going, how am I doing this? And I'm struggling for that. And I know that the fire department has, you said you walked the property, that they have plenty of room to turn around their fire trucks, ambulances, if even if they.
You're certainly, you're certainly in the back, especially with your driveway.
Right.
You could make room where you could put almost a cul-de-sac type turnaround plot there if you had to. I'm not saying you had to. I'm saying that based on what I, the way I looked at your foundation and the way you curved your driveway in, that they could go beyond it and back it in if they had to. If they had to go into your house to get to your house, I don't know how your daughter's lot was going to be driveway, because I didn't, I just imagine where the house is going to be based on.
It's going to be roughly where the chicken coop is, in that open area there with a pile of.
But I'm just saying that to get up to your house and put a fire out, I have no problem. If they had to back the engine out to get it, drive it out again, they could do it, without too much additional widening of what I saw.
Yeah. I mean, this is what I deal with every day for work, is I don't want to make it difficult if a fire department's coming here to save me. I want them to save my life.
Right.
So, I'm going to set, I'm, I know what I have to do to set it up, to make it like that, so it's safe for the fire department.
I am, that's good. That's, I'm glad you, that's, I appreciate that more than you know.
And I'm not, and I'm not trying to sell the piece of property, I'm trying to just live there, so I want to make sure that it's.
But again, Lee, we're constrained by what the bylaw says, what the statute says, what the case law says.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What does it mean to withdraw without prejudice? Is that what the word you use?
So, if we, if there was a vote, and the vote does not go the way of the petitioner, they are restricted for two years to coming back here. Or it would have to be wildly different for them to come back here. So, by withdrawing without prejudice, they could come back in, you know, February or March with a different plan or something like that. So, it's usually, you know, as a courtesy, we usually, yeah, I mean, it's not going to be, it's not going to be, well, we move this tree.
There is a proceed, if you deny it, we cannot come back with the same petition within two years. We'd have to have a different petition, and it is a process to go through. If we withdraw without prejudice, kind of like to say. Yeah, not that we would bother you with the exact same plan next month.
No, but you could.
But something could change six months from now that might say, hey, exactly. Right.
Right. So, if.
I, I think the writing's on the wall.
Right.
Right? So.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right.
So, we would request that be a motion or vote.
For our vote?
Yes.
Just to make it, I'm going to hold off on that for two seconds. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in regards to this, just as a formality? So, we'll bring it back to.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Pulling it back with upridges.
Yeah.
The heat files again, we, the bodies would get noticed if they're holding file.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It would be a totally different, like a continuance you don't get notice, the notice happens during the hearing, like it did last month to this month. But, you know, if they choose to file something completely different, then the whole process starts all over again.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're going to bring it back to the floor. Someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to allow the petitioner to withdraw the petition without prejudice.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for your time, guys, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And while I have the camera, I want to send a shout-out. Congratulations, they have a high school football team, state champion.
Thank you for all you do for them.
They make it fun for me, to all their families. Congratulations.
That must have been amazing to be at Gillette, huh?
It was a lot of fun for everybody. It really was. It was a great experience. This group of kids has now won at Boston Garden, that's one game, now they've won at Gillette.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Not a lot of kids can say that.
No.
No.
All right. It being after 7:05, the vice chair will read the petition of the next petitioner.
Public hearing notice, the town of Abington, zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 12, 2019, at 7:05 PM at the Abington Town offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Dorello Senna, Senna?
Mm-hmm.
566 Brockton Avenue, Abington, for special permit to change from single family with in-law to a two-family at 566 Brockton Avenue, under 175-21A-2. The property is located on assessors map 8, lot 58, in the highway commercial zone. Rich Nagrelli, Chairman.
All right, and one second before I give you the floor. From the planning office, in regards to the petition of Dorello, is it Senna or Senna?
Yes, Senna.
Senna. 566 Brockton Ave., the board members would like to voice their opposition to this request. They feel the intent of the bylaw, of the, of the law bylaw was to allow for family members to live in the same homes with separate quarters in a residential home. Converting an in-law to a two-family and being able to rent the property to people not specifically outlined in the bylaw defeats the spirit and intent of parents, children, grandparents, et cetera, being able to share residential space.
Where is that from?
That is from the planning board.
Thanks.
All right, so, you have the floor, ma'am. Please go ahead.
I just like to, to ask to be granted, like, as the papers say, like, to instead have a in-law. I would like to ask the grant to become like a two-family. The reason why, my mother used to live here, and now she going back and forth to Brazil, and she stay most when she comes with my other sister. And I feel that I have enough parking lot. I know the space is not that big, but right now, in this moment, I cannot make this big, but I can in the future to feel more comfortable for the people who rent. But so far, I believe it's a good size. And just to let you know, I'm getting old, and been working very hard with the cleaning, also part-time realtor, and I'm just a single family for most of my life. I'm just trying to get away, to get something to help me out, when I'm unable, you know what I mean, to keep working hard as I am right now.
Okay. So, you're right there on Brockton and Ashland Street, correct?
Right now, I have like a 98 parking, parking space.
Mm-hmm.
How big, how big is that unit that you live in?
Both, both is 175th. I believe the one I, I am, is around 12.
How many?
Little less, two.
Two. And then a single bedroom in the in-law apartment?
Yeah, yeah. A single bed, I can either use a two-bedroom and not like a dining room. Would it be like a kitchen, two-bedroom, and a living room? And a bathroom, of course. And mine is like a two-bedroom, two, two, one dining room, one living room, a big kitchen, and two full bathroom.
Now, this is a picture of your house, ma'am?
Yes.
So, just trying to understand your layout. You have this overhead view, so is this apartment one?
Mm-hmm.
Or this is basically your residence?
Yes.
And this is currently the in-law apartment?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Is there any partition between the, the two rooms or apartments, or?
What do you partition?
Is it a doorway? Is it open? Is it?
No, no.
No what? It's not open, or it's not a doorway?
No, it's not a doorway right now.
So, it's wide open?
Yeah. It's, no, it's, it's, I have a wall between.
Okay.
There is a wall.
Okay.
So, how do you, so how do you get into the other unit? Do you have to go outside and go in?
Two, yeah. I have two doors.
Outside, not from the, you can't get into it from outside.
No, no. I used to, but I put like an entertainment center in, in my house, so, and that's how I had to.
So, is there an actual door there that you're just coming up with the entertainment center, or?
Was a door before I came here the last time, and he asked you to put the kitchen, the stove there. Until that time, it was a door. And when I came, I, when you guys granted me, so I had to put the stove there, and that's, that's when the, the door was shut.
Okay.
So, by your estimates, this, the, what is currently an in-law apartment is about 500, 600 square feet right now?
Yeah.
And you're about 1100, 1200 square feet?
It's over, I believe it's around the 5.
Mm-hmm.
550, not 4.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a good size.
Yeah. How old is the house, if you know?
60, 66, if I'm not wrong, or 64.
And was the in-law added to that, or was that part of the original building?
No, there was a, I think they did a new addition. When I bought, it was like that, but was totally open.
Did you buy it as an in-law, or did you have it converted?
No, I didn't, yeah. As I mentioned, I'm a single parent, and it was only me and my son. And then my sister came and my mother, but was kind of too big. So, in that time, in 2005, 2000, that's when I bought the house. When I bought the house, I bought the house on promise that the following year, I was gonna be able to refinance and get a better loan, and it never happened. So, and in that time, I had like friends, cousin, guys renting the rooms, but I felt kind of insecure because it was only me and my son. So, that's how I end up talking to- because I have like my nephew here, my sister, and I end up talking to them to see if they were able to cooperate with me, and that has been for so long. But, like as I said, my mother decided to keep going forward, and my sister, she rented her own space, because, you know, parents stay. So, and that's- that's how I- that's how I decided to ask, because this would be-
Right.
A big help for me in my life.
So, I'm still, just to get it clear, did you buy it as-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no.
No, that's fine.
I didn't, no.
So, you bought it as a single family?
Single family.
Okay. So, when did you have it legally converted to have an in-law apartment?
Right before, you remember the other home inspector that end up dying on the boat?
Yep.
He's the one- so, right, that was the time.
Okay.
Dr. Jeffries, yeah. He died in 08.
Because I was-
Ten, eleven years ago?
I was on the board then. I just don't- I don't remember this, but-
So, in-laws started in '05, I believe. So, I haven't checked to verify whether or not it was registered in on this. My guess is it is, if you remember, so it was Dr. Jeffries, et cetera.
Yeah.
That's when I applied to get the in-law.
Right.
Have you been out there, Marshall? Inside?
I have not.
You haven't seen inside or anything?
If you chose to act favorably on this, there are stipulations with regards to the size that you have to maintain. It sounds like she's gonna be well within 600 square feet for the first apartment, and then four, minimum four hundred square feet, I believe, for every unit thereafter. And then she'd have to have kitchens, and there are requirements with regards to fire separation between the newly created two-family unit versus having something similar, you know, having an in-law apartment. There are some different rules regarding that.
So, there is some-
So, before she- if you chose to grant this, before she rents it out and whatnot, I'd have to take a look at the layout, the setup, and separation between. In all likelihood, it probably would be all right. I don't know whether she's gonna have separate utilities, et cetera. If that's something that isn't up to me, that she chooses to rent it, including heat and electric or whatever the separate utility. I don't know.
What's your- what's your plan with that? Are you gonna have separate utilities or?
In the future, maybe. Right now, I was checking, yeah.
It's all comes under your-
Yeah, I was checking. It's gonna- I spend a little bit of money, yeah.
It's an expense, isn't it?
I really, I can't afford. I can't afford it.
She doesn't always spend the power, like, with such a credit, everything's included, but that's-
That's for sure.
That's not a decision that is up to us. It's just a separation. He addresses, and I just have to take a look at that. But other than that, the size, et cetera, it sounds like she's got a kitchen, they've gotta have a bathroom, there's certain things with regards to that ability, but it sounds like- you have two kitchens?
Yes.
Yeah, so it sounds like she has what's will be required.
Okay.
And so, she has the pocket. And a special permit is allowed in this-
It's a highway commercial, correct?
It's, yeah, it is allowed in this district. It's by a special permit, it's still what it will be required. And if you chose to entertain this, then I would suggest that you, although it's implied, vote to negate the in-law status.
Okay. So, it can't be either or?
Well, it could be argued, in my opinion, that you now have a two-family with an in-law status as well, all three. And that's not- that's not what your, I don't think, is what her intent is, and that's not what you would- But if you vote to allow it to be a two-family, then you would vote at that point to negate the in-law status.
Okay.
We can condition special permits.
Sure.
We could limit this to just one bedroom versus two-bedroom or?
So, it's interesting, because it's a special permit. If it was to be granted, would it cease if she sold it? No.
Not unless you made a stipulation with regards to-
No, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily, but sometimes that happens with special permits, where as soon as the property changes hands-
Well, that stipulated with regards to in-laws, for instance, if it sold to something other than a family number.
Right. Okay. Well, I just-
That that's a condition you can put on it if you-
Yeah, I mean-
Variances travel with it.
Right.
That was the issue we had with regards to variance for tattooed, I believe it was.
Correct.
It's concerned that, geez, we're not positive it's gonna be an appropriate business for the area. I don't know exactly where it was down by the scenes, I think, but-
Right, I don't remember that one.
Yeah, maybe it's a lot then, but if it's an area that travels with it, whether it was a special permit, then there could be stipulations.
Right. I mean, I understand what the planning board was saying in regards to-
Can you read that one more time?
To their concerns. Do you have that, or did I already lose it? I only have five pieces of paper here. I don't know where it would go. In regards to the petition of Dorelda Senna, 566 Brockton Ave., the board members would like to voice their opposition to this request. They feel the intent of the in-law bylaw was to allow for family members to live in the same homes with separate quarters in a residential home. Converting an in-law to a two-family and being able to rent the property to people not specifically outlined in the bylaw defeats the spirit and intent of parents, children, grandparents, et cetera, being able to share a residential space.
I would agree with that, except that in this district, this to convert to a two-family is allowed.
Is allowed.
Exactly. And that's- I was gonna- I was gonna say that, in that this isn't exactly a residential district.
No.
I don't think it-
If this was an R-30-
Yeah.
It would be different. It wouldn't even be a residential situation.
Right, and I don't think it-
Wouldn't even be allowed.
I don't think it excludes that either, in that if- if, when Ms. Senna decides to sell the property, if somebody else chooses to buy it and say, I'm gonna have my daughter, my parents live in the other apartment. I mean, it certainly, you know, I mean, it certainly is laid out that way. I think what works for me in Ms. Senna's favor is that it isn't a highway commercial zone. It's a, you know, it's basically a studio-type apartment, you know, based on 500, 600 square feet of living space. So, you know, you're not gonna- you're not gonna rent it to four people, you know, because it's just-
And if you- and if you look at the area, there are a lot of multi-
Yeah.
Residences in that area. It's a lot of businesses, so.
So, I have a question. I don't know even if you're gonna grant me. Hopefully, you are. But I don't know if I understood well when you mentioned like one bedroom, in case there would be one-
I asked if that's something we might want to consider.
So, just- just think, because I am planning like to add like in the future to make more room. So, that's why right now, I would like to request two bedrooms and not a dining room, and yes, a living room. Because when I, in the future, when I'm able to add, then I could add the dining room instead the bedroom.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, based, from- again, for me, based on the lot- I apologize. Based on the lot and all that stuff, if she stuck within the setbacks and all that, you know, it's a small building to begin with, so if she wanted to make it bigger within the setbacks, I don't have a problem with it. Again, mostly because where it's located-
It's for his own business.
You know, she's not- she's not affecting in any adverse way, I think, the neighborhood or the neighbors or anything like that.
So, the assessors have you listed as four bedrooms. Do you have three on your side and one on the in-law side?
No, I don't know why, because when I check it, on the public record says four.
Four bedrooms.
Yeah.
Assessors. Assessors have.
Assess what they think. They see, that doesn't mean-
So, so-
There's no bearing on what is.
Tell me again, so tell me again what you have on your side for bedrooms?
Mine?
For bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
And what do you have on the in-law side for bedrooms?
I have a two- I have one bedroom, but it can be used as a two-bedroom, and that's if I don't use like, if I take it off like the dinner, the dining room, and you put like two bedrooms.
Okay, so you'd have two bedrooms, a kitchen?
A kitchen and a living room.
Do both bed- would both bedrooms outdoors?
They do.
There's not to say she couldn't change the layout. She could- she could add bedrooms, as long as she- where she could add a bigger living room or large, the unit, if you allowed her to have an apartment. And she comes to my department and wants to add a bedroom, there would be additional parking that would be required. We'd have to verify that she has that. If she wants to put another family room on to her side or to the other side, as long as they meet the setbacks, et cetera, that would be allowed.
Yeah, but I don't know if maybe we want to keep some control over it too, and say, you're limited to this number of bedrooms. And if she wants to put on even a third bedroom, she'd have to come back and-
That's true.
Right?
You could do that.
Just so there's a little more control over it. I'm not sure if one versus two bedroom is just a big deal, but if you go on three or four bedrooms, and you don't have to come back to us.
Yeah, that's when- that's when I think it changes the-
Yeah, that starts to change the whole character.
Yeah, the characteristic of the apartment at that point. So, you were looking, Ms. Senna, in a perfect world, for the rental unit to be a two-bedroom, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because if I do like the way it's now, like the kitchen, dining room, living room, and bedroom, when I needed to do, I think it would be easier to add, to come there and ask to do a dining room or a dining room instead of bedroom, no? Because if I ask right now as a two-bedroom, you continue as a two-bedroom, and I could, when I can, add just another room or would it make any difference?
Overall, we're not concerned, I think, in terms of the square footage of the living space as, in terms of, you know, once- once it becomes a three or a four or five-bedroom house, then, you know, the characteristics of who's gonna rent that out is totally different, and that- that's just something we would want to be aware of before you were allowed to do it.
Mm-hmm.
So-
So, do I have to come here, or just go to the-
No, if we granted this tonight, with the limitation that it'd only be two bedrooms, as long as you kept it two bedrooms, and you complied with everything else that needs to be done, parking and whatever.
Bathrooms and-
Whatever else needs to be done as far as-
Then I go to the-
Go through the building.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to come back here.
If you want- if you want to expand it beyond a two-bedroom.
A two-bedroom apartment, then.
You'd have to come back if you wanted to expand beyond a two-bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
You want to make it a three-bedroom apartment, you'd have to come back, because stipulations-
Okay, I got you, yeah.
But if you wanted to put a porch or a breezeway or, you know, another garage on, then you wouldn't need to come to us.
And it's just through my department.
What- do you know, Marshall, what's the parking limitations if it's- if it's a two-bedroom versus a one-bedroom?
Yeah, I have it in there.
I have enough it.
So, she'd have to comply with that before you allow the use.
As well as the separation between units, except for fire separation and egresses, yes?
So, just so you understand, if you don't have enough there, then obviously, you're not gonna be able to do what you want to do.
I have enough parking there.
Good.
Okay. I'm just gonna say, for the record, there's no one in the audience, kind of like our TV viewership. So, we're gonna close it to the floor and bring it back to the table. I mean, you know, in my opinion, I'm, based on specifically where this is located, in the highway commercial zone, I don't have a problem with what the petitioner is looking for. I would, as I think Mr. Burbine pointed out, I would like to limit it to, you know, two bedrooms apiece. So, two two-bedroom apartments. I think if I was going to be making the motion, I would try and include verbiage like that. What do you guys think?
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I think I agree with all that completely.
Would someone like to make a motion then?
And would you include that when she begins using the two-bedroom apartment, the in-law is no-
Oh, right.
Is that gonna fall in the same motion, or would that be a separate motion?
That could be included. So, you're saying that should be basically codified for when it become, when she starts using it as a second?
I think it would be better to do it that way, when the two-bedroom, she gets the occupancy for a two-bedroom apartment.
It no longer becomes-
Then the in-law is no longer. That way, if there's an interim, something happens.
Right.
She isn't able to, I don't know, she can't get- she can still use it as an in-law until the time at which the two-bedroom or what the apartment is converted. And we get issue a certificate of occupancy for a two-bedroom apartment, or one, yeah, for a two-bedroom apartment, or whatever she's got for the apartment.
I think that's generous.
I just thought it was more convenient for her.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm confused. I don't know what this.
Sure. Show them how it's done, Andy.
Usually, Andrew's the one who does. So, I would make a motion that we approve the petition of Dorelda Senna, 566 Brockton Avenue, Abington, for a special permit to change from single family with in-law to a two-family at 566 Brockton Avenue, under 175-21A2, that both units are limited to two bedrooms, in that upon the issuance of an occupancy permit for the what is now in-law apartment, the in-law, is that a special permit? The in-law special permit is modified.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Praise the Lord.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
I wish I could more about. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, do I come to see you anytime?
I don't wanna say, yeah, I'll say yes.
I bring some panettone. I bring some panettone for you guys.
Don't do that.
Yeah? Why? Panettone for Christmas.
Christmas present?
Yeah. It's a special panettone. Special panettone.
That'll fat me right up.
Right up.
Delicious.
They are delicious. I give all my clients, so then-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I bring one for you, and if you want, definitely with your patients, you know.
Oh.
You want a one?
No, thanks. I'll swing by. I'll have a piece of hers. Thank you so much. Enjoy.
There's no need for that, but thank you very much.
No, it's no need, but if I want two.
Well, you can talk to the girls in my office.
Okay, so I know. I know, so I bring. I bet if I bring to the girls, you're gonna-
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Merry Christmas, good luck.
God bless you. Thank- I'm gonna go to the church to say thank God.
Thank you. So, we just want to point out in regards, the minutes for November 14th, we're not ready at this time, correct? Nor are the voting members all here, so we'll kick that down the can till next year. And we had not heard from town council in regards to the commentary for-
Well, she sent that email a couple of weeks ago, but she hasn't sent anything with all the cleaned-up edition yet, so I'll follow up with her, and hopefully, we'll have that, so we can get it finalized in January.
That'll be it. That'll be good. So, that said, do we have, make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the second meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.